This conference will now be recorded.
Call to order, the regular council meeting on July 1st, 2024. To order at 7:00 PM. All rise to the pleasure of the region.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, motion?
I'll move to accept the agenda as written.
So moved by Councilor Webber is her second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Wagner.
Hey, Colin.
Oh, sorry. I'm like next. Councilor Wagner.
Aye.
Councilor Norman.
Aye.
Councilor Ash.
Aye.
Mayor Hilbert.
Aye.
Councilor Webb.
Aye.
Let's get carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any presentations tonight? None?
Under new business.
Okay, did not have a mayor's report. Any council committee meeting reports tonight?
No.
Well, I would have had one if I'd have made it, but I faced mine, but I did get caught up with the chair a lot. Not a lot happened there. They're still sending that recommendation forward. Yeah, I don't know if you've guys seen it yet or not. Okay.
Have you seen a new recommendation from Public Works?
In just minutes.
Yeah.
Appointment?
An appointment of someone to the board?
Oh, yeah. Well, that and then the sidewalk.
No.
Connectivity, they haven't.
I haven't seen anything.
Okay. Well, it's coming.
Okay.
I intended the parks meeting. It's set around that they're going to present our new business tonight, so.
Okay. Moving forward, topics on the floor. Cassette agenda for acceptance? No. Cassette agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for June 17th, 2024.
Move to accept consent agenda for approval.
So moved by Councilor Wagner, or is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Ash. Sorry, don't.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Hilbert?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, any unfinished business? None? New business, Parks Committee recommendations, smoking in parks, page four. So I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Well, we're going to turn it over to the Parks Committee.
Okay.
Go ahead.
City of Columbia, Hoplin Bridge Street. I think that's what I'm supposed to do. I am a member of the Parks Committee. We don't let everybody here tonight because we may have some obstacles downtown from long distances. And I am bringing to do the majority of the presentation, but we also have several other members of Parks Committee. We have Lee Hart here and Spencer Cole. Jason Reelock will try to be here, but we're not sure. Janet Suedo is also attempting to make it here, but I don't think she'll make it actually. And then Carol Calhoun is out there and Jamie Seacrest is the secretary. And I'm hoping he makes it because he's got all the letters of support. I'm not sure you guys have.
They have them.
They have them. They have that and the draft.
Okay.
From Jane.
So we have, who do you have letters of support from?
He sent me all of them. I thought. Hellman, the school opening, Lomarche, Michael Calhoun, Debbie Taylor, Carol Calhoun, and Michael Calhoun.
Perfect. Thank you, Carol. So the Parks Committee has really been kind of looking at this issue of smoke-free parks since we've been trying to promote healthier parks for almost two years. And this is kind of a combination. And we've talked to various community groups. We've surveyed people. And we wanted to share with you what we've learned and tried to kind of put this together in a concise way. So this is the presentation that we put together, Smoke-Free Parks in Renomea, which is what we're promoting. So. Okay, so as of 2017, 28 municipalities throughout Oregon have smoke-free parks. In addition to that, at least 11 counties in Oregon are implementing a tobacco-free county property rule. And four out of the other, four out of the six cities in Columbia County are smoke, have smoke-free, tobacco-free parks policies. So it's just Platsk and I and and Renomea that are not. We're the only cities that don't have a smoke-free, tobacco-free. And what we're promoting is actually smoke-free. We're not trying to go tobacco-free. So the chew and stuff like that is part of what we're trying to present tonight. Okay. So the benefits of smoke-free parks, there's a decreased fire risk, which in this kind of this season, we are particularly aware of. There's environmental impact. We'll talk about that in a month. Better social modeling for kids and helping those who are trying to quit. There's improved citizen access and universal right to park access for people that might not otherwise be able to access the parks. And there's a cost effectiveness and will provide some clarity with enforcement. So the decreased fire risk. Discarded cigarettes are a significant cause of outdoor fires, accounting for hundreds of millions of dollars in annual costs and environmental damage, personal property losses, firefighting expenses, and restorative efforts. For the last 10 years, there have been an average of 40 fires per year due to cigarettes on the Oregon Department of Forestry land alone. So there was, we're having a hard time really being able to quantify this, so we just took that one piece of the pie. That's pretty significant for 40 fires per year just on Oregon Department of Forestry. The fire season in the Pacific Northwest is already growing longer and stronger. Even areas previously deemed low-risk are now at risk of increased fires in the future. And dependent, we are dependent on a primarily on a volunteer fire department. And our resources have been stretched in that area. Renomea should seek to reduce the fire risk wherever possible and not to stretch our department beyond their resources. Smoke-free parks reduce the risk of outdoor fires. And I did, we did present to the fire department, the ambulance and the the firefighters that were in the audience, we presented to the board. The board was supportive, but did not feel like they could still have support. And there seemed to be a lot of support from both the EMS folks and the firefighters. They were going to take it back to their groups and come back with a letter, but we haven't gotten a lot of letters, so. But they were supportive of the presentation. The environmental impact, this is a lot.
Yeah, my name is Spencer. Spencer Roll. I live out on Keyz. I guess I'm unincorporated in Columbia County, but I'm also the vice chair of the Upper Nalen Watership Council, so. Just environmental impact. So discarded cigarette butts and vaping cartridges are non-biodegradable forms of litter that can take decades to break down. This litter is unproductive near Renomea parks, expensive to clean up, and is environmentally harmful to waterways and wildlife. This waste can also affect the health of humans when children pick up used cigarette butts or cartridges or when the chemicals produced from wet cigarette butts or vaping cartridges enter storm drains, groundwater, recreational bodies of water, and other environments. Outdoor tobacco use policies can help reduce tobacco product waste as well as maintenance and cleanup costs. The other thing is to know, we, you know, we're really lucky and blessed that we're nowhere near to have like, you know, we have Rock Creek, we have the Nalen River, and we have multiple parks on, you know, all those bodies of water. And so like trying to do what we can to help our, you know, our wild salmon run and get those cigarette butts out of the, you know, because there's in addition to, you know, it's just like, it's gross because it's litter, but it's also like, it's all microplastic and it's also a lot of heavy metals getting into that waterways. Just, you know, thinking about like, how can we help those struggling fish already like, you know, just like do even better? So, yeah.
So the next slide, they show something that I found just walking on Webway. And it was a cigarello packet with a cigarello in it, grape flavored, which should appeal to the oldest members of this community, I suspect. The, but there was a cigarello in it as well, so a kid could pick it up and use it or take it. So I found that. And then on Sunday, I was walking around the lake one time, because I've got a broken foot. And on that long trip around the lake, not steering off the path along, I counted 27 cigarette butts. So we do have the problem of litter in the parks and stuff in terms of cigarettes and stuff. Okay, Janet is going to be talking about the prevention and creating social norms, and she's a school psychologist, but she's not able to make it. But you will see that there is a letter from Jim Hellman, superintendent, pretty strong letter regarding the Renomea School District's strong support designating all parks smoke-free. In addition to that, the homeschool students or the parents of the homeschool under, that work with Debbie Taylor in the school also asked that they write a letter of support for smoke-free parks. So that I think you also have in your packet. The prevention and creating, the prevention and creating positive social norms. Smoke-free policies send a message to children and teens that tobacco and vape use is not encouraged behavior or a norm in the community. They're not seeing it when they go out and when they're going to the parks or when they're, if they don't see it out there, they're, they start to form a different view of what is normal and what isn't. Eighty-three percent of the people in Renomea don't smoke. So the more smoke-free environment a community provides, the more we encourage on people to make healthy choices. Smoke-free parks protect families. They protect kids. They protect seniors. They protect visitors from the harms of secondhand smoke, the chemicals in the discarded cigarette butts and vaping cartridges, and the environmental harms of tobacco and vaping products. And it also supports people trying to quit. In addition to preventing secondhand smoke exposure, outdoor smoke-free laws help smokers who are trying to quit by eliminating the sight and smell of tobacco. There are 53,000 Columbia, Columbia County residents. Of the 10,000, 100 who regularly smoke cigarettes, again, 83% don't, so that leaves 17% for no one to do. Fifty-four, 5,400 people tried to quit smoking in the last year, approximately 10%. So 10% are trying to quit every year. So this would be, would be a way to kind of actually help support them in trying to make it, to quit. Okay, the health harms of secondhand smoke, we do have Healy Schimmel here from the county, who's the tobacco, the tobacco educator, but what do you call it? Tobacco Prevention Education. And so, and I've asked for him to just kind of speak to this after the presentation as well. But you also have a letter from Carol Calhoun in your packet where she basically did a little research on tobacco and smoke. I will not read her letter in this presentation, but I'm assuming you've read it? If not, I will read it for you after the presentation. But basically she did some additional research, and I think that he does have something else to say about that. But the health harms of secondhand smoke, the exposure of too secondhand smoke can lead to causing cancer, heart disease, and death. It is also linked to asthma and other respiratory problems, and we seem to have a high incidence battle in this community. Secondhand smoke from both tobacco and cannabis is harmful to everyone and can cause disease and premature death among those who do not smoke. Only 30 minutes of exposure can lead to damage comparable to that of a firsthand smoker. So only 30 minutes of secondhand exposure can lead to the damage comparable to a firsthand smoker. You are all clear of what I mean by secondhand smoke, right? Secondhand smoke is, you're not getting the smoking, but you're, you are getting particles in the air as a result of somebody else who's near you smoking. It's especially, especially harmful to people with existing health conditions, including asthma, bronchitis, constructive, chronic, observed pulmonary disease, or COPD. 10.8% of the people in Renomea have asthma, and then 7% of the adults have COPD. That's a pretty sizable number as well. Children exposed to secondhand smoke face the increased risk of asthma, developing asthma as a result of doing that, sudden infant death syndrome, or SIDS, and acute respiratory infections and ear problems. So one of the things that we are learning, and this is a little bit of a confusing chart. Let's see if we can try to explain it. But this chart, chart shows the exposure within five feet, up to 25 feet, and how, and the fact that even at 25 feet away, you're still getting 46% more exposure to chemicals and particulates in the air than you would if someone was not smoking. That, I mean, it's, it's a confusing graph. But, but it's what, what we're learning is that we used to think 25 feet was safe. But now we recognize that any exposure, no far, no matter how, how far it is from you, any exposure, if you can, if you can absorb that, it's not safe for you, right? And what we don't know, you've got factors like wind, other things, you can't really say there's no exposure at that point. So, so anyway, even with 20, up to 25 feet between you and someone with a lit cigarette, you could still breathe 46% more particles compared to the air without a cigarette smoke. The distance at which secondhand smoke particles reach zero density has not been determined. So what we learned over the last 10 years or more is that we thought this blew the mountain safe. Now it's, this is not, now we realize that we don't really know, that we haven't been able to actually find the level that is safe. Okay, next slide. The air quality changes with the smoker's vicinity. Percentage of increase in the particles at various distances from a smoker, and you can see the chart basically that supports the previous chart. Cost-effectiveness of smoke-free policies. Right now, we have a policy that some, certain parks are smoke-free. We've got, we've got four that are smoke-free in this stage. We've got the Shea Park, Dog Park, the Skate Park, and, or, or Columbia. It's pretty clear in those parks that you're not supposed to smoke. You only need one sign to communicate that, right? But it gets really confusing where not smoking within 50 feet of restroom or food prep area, or the playground, or the sports fields, or et cetera, right? Makes it really confusing. You have to have, I think, in Spencer Park, you have to have about nine signs, right? So it becomes confusing, well, where can I go to smoke? And do I have to walk through smoke to get to those same areas, right? So it, so anyway, so cost-effectiveness of smoke-free policies. Tobacco-related disease is still, is still the leading cause of preventable death in Oregon and costs Columbia County $19 million each year in medical care and $17 million in loss productivity. Smoke-free policies reduce maintenance needs and costs for the city, less money is spent to clean up cigarette butts, vaping cartridges, and other waste of products. Smoke-free policies are easier to enforce in those with designated smoking areas, like I was just talking about, demanding less staff time for enforcement, less signage, et cetera. And enforcement primarily occurs through signage and establishment of social norms. So the next slide talks, shows you exactly what we're looking at in terms of, in one year. This is for Columbia County. So 10,100 people in the county smoke, regularly smoke. And people with a serious illness caused by tobacco is close to 400, 3,750. Tobacco-related deaths in one year, 147. The money spent on tobacco-related medical care, 5.3 million in Columbia County. The population's got 42,387 adults, 10,627 youth, fellow residents of 53,000 in 20. So in one year, 43.7 million in productivity losses are due to premature tobacco-related deaths. Now I want to talk about citizen access to parks and Bill Kuzina.
Hi, my name is William Hart. I'm a volunteer with the Parks Committee. I live at 1288 East Town Street. People have the right to visit our parks without fear of being exposed to health hazards. When people smoke in public places, they affect the health of everyone around them. To people at the highest risk for adverse health effects from secondhand smoke, smoking in a public space should, could pose a physical barrier to accessing and utilizing public spaces. In a recent survey at the 2023 Sam and Festival, 30% of 57 respondents reported having at least one health condition that would be affected by secondhand smoke. A smoke-free policy would ensure equal access for all by reducing an access barrier for people with asthma and other chronic conditions. Under the American inclusibility tab, non-smokers who have a documented sensitivity to tobacco smoke are protected from exposure to environmental tobacco smoke in public accommodations. Individuals covered by the ADA are entitled to the full and equal adjustment of public accommodations. In the same Sam and Festival survey, people were asked on a scale of 1 to 5, with 1 being I would stop, and 5 being would I go more often? How would the city parks go in smoke-free affecting the use of them? And the average answer of all respondents was 3.85. This shows that the majority of people would use our parks more, not less. Tobacco and smoke-free policies ensure safe access and clean parks in the whole community.
So this, I don't know if you can see this, but you can probably see it on your slides better. Do you have the slides?
We didn't.
Don't have the slides?
Hi, can you get the slides?
No.
Print them. You were, I was adding, yes, we didn't print them.
Okay, well, I'll try to walk you through this because the font's really small. Okay, so these are four different options for smoke-free policies. We are choosing, we are choosing to ask you to go for the third option. So the first one would be no smoking near children's play structures, which is kind of what we started out with, because back in, when was it, 2016? Or whatever, when the, when 914 was really passed.
I don't remember.
Okay.
I think it's 15 going into 16.
It's 15.
15, okay. So at that point, the, at that point, the, it was specific, in fact, originally, I think, even before that, we talked about just making pool, doing pool was the only smoke-free area in Renomea. Then within the Parks Committee revisited again in 19, or 2015.
15.
15. And at that point, they, we, that was expanded to include children's playground areas and restaurants and such. But so basically, with the no smoking near the children's play structure, only the children who play on play structures are protected from secondhand smoke. And it's confusing, the enforcement piece, it's confusing to park visitors who would need clear signs around the play area, and it's difficult to enforce at a specific distance. And the other pros and cons, it decreases the risk of fire near, or risk of exposure near the play structure, right? So that's, those real narrow things only, you know, have some disadvantages. The policy, if you know, if no smoking except in designated smoking areas, which is what the more recent policies have certain areas and certain parks that have been designated as no smoking or smoking areas, that again is kind of confusion. Most park visitors accept those who have the designated smoking area, are protected from secondhand smoke. But it's difficult to enforce, and you need to set clear boundaries of the smoking area, which is sometimes confusing. And there's, tends to be a bit of litter in the designated area. The third option is what we're asking for, which is no smoking on park property. That would affect all park visitors. It's the easiest to enforce. There's no confusion of where people can and cannot smoke. And the benefits are, it decreases youth smoking by showing them that smoking is not the norm, reduces litter from cigarette butts significantly, reduces fire in all park areas, makes quitting easier for smokers who are trying to quit, and makes the park a clean and healthy environment for all community members. The last option, which is no tobacco use on park property, which includes chewing tobacco, and that's not what we are asking, okay? Because we're primarily focused on air quality and exposure. That is very similar in terms of the benefits. It affects all park visitors. It's easier to try and enforce, you know, no smoking somewhat, a little bit more difficult to enforce chewing tobacco. And there's no confusion of where people can and cannot smoke. And the benefits are basically, the pros and cons are basically the same as three. So that's why we went with three as the third option. Okay, policy enforcement. So I think that there's been concern about enforcement voiced, and so we're, we're hoping that this kind of clears up what we're thinking. Tobacco, you know, one of the things that people have been concerned about is, well, if you were in Anderson Park, could you park it? Could you camp, could you smoke in your campsite? And yes, you could. Where we would model this after the state parks, well, basically in state parks, you can camp, you can smoke in your campsite, or in your car, or your RV, et cetera. It's just that you don't, you're, but when you leave your campsite, or the restaurant, whatever, you need to put your cigarette down. The, so we would be looking at that, saying that we'd also be supporting with this policy. Even if the policy is unable to be enforced 100% of the time, it establishes a norm that most citizens will abide by. Not everybody, but if you think back, like, you know, I think back on when we, when smoking was allowed in the workplace, right? And when smoking was allowed in restaurants, on the airplanes, you know? I mean, I know I'm aging myself, but I think some of you in this room can understand right now. At this stage in the game, it's, it's, it's not acceptable. You don't smoke in a restaurant, in a restaurant sitting, or on a plane, or whatever. You could be kicked off, certainly, but it's also, people don't even think about lighting up. You don't, you don't run into it because it's established enough as a social norm that people don't do this. So that's how we are expecting that this norm by putting signage up, signage is the key. By putting signage up, that, that, that we will create this, this norm, this social norm, that then people will abide by that in most of the situations. Most people try to believe the law. Not everybody, but most people do. 67% of those surveyed in the Sam and Festival believed that Renomea's parks were already smoke-free. So they've been kind of surprised when they heard that they aren't entirely smoke-free. And I've talked to a lot of people that actually were surprised. So most of the public is likely not to perceive the change. So this is a, I asked Jamie to, to, from my benefit, this is Spencer Park, which you guys probably recognize. And we looked at 50 feet, right now, the ordinance says that you can't smoke. And we looked at 50 feet, right now the ordinance says that you can't smoke within 50 feet of, of the restrooms, the play area, food prep areas, sports arenas. You've got the skate park over there that's considered a children's area, easy area, whatever. The pavilion that the kids are playing in, et cetera. So you've got, I think I counted nine, there's some overlapping, nine areas. And those, they, you can see the boundaries of, so that's currently in Spencer where you're not allowed to smoke, right? So, and if you can imagine, it is confusing where you can't smoke, right? And that you're left in, in, and, and also getting from place, I mean, obviously if you knew where you were going, it'd be easier. It's, it's kind of a challenging, and it requires a lot of different signs. And you probably wouldn't need more than one sign per area because, because there's so much ground to cover, right? Like the sports fields and things like that. So it's, it would require a lot of signage, and actually about 50% or more of that park is already smoke, is smoke-free. The other thing is like the boosters. The boosters require that anybody that joins the booster signs a contract, or a letter, or one agreement, that they can't, that they're not allowed to smoke at, at any of their events. So, so anyway. Okay, so the conclusion, this is really, what we are asking for is this is about making our parks more accessible for our community members and visitors. Some people don't, can't fully access the parks because of health reasons or whatever in terms of exposure to, to cigarette smoke. They, give you an example, I was walking around the lake the other day, and I, I'm on the, I'm at the path, and there is a man sitting on top of one of picnic tables on the other side of the lake, and he's smoking. I was within three feet of his smoking because he's sitting on top of the picnic table smoking, right? And that is, and he's there pretty often, actually, but, but it's like I couldn't avoid it. I couldn't avoid the, even if I'd gone to the other side of town, I couldn't avoid the cigarette smoke. And I don't have asthma, but when this whole thing started, when the Parks Committee started talking about this, it came up because there were people in the group that did have asthma, and they had gone into coffee fits as a result of going to my lawyer. So this, what we believe is by making the parks smoke-free, that we are making it more accessible. When you think about the ADA stuff that Bill mentioned earlier. The air will be healthier for everyone who comes to visit our parks. A tobacco-free policy does not judge or exclude people who choose to use. It just asks them not to smoke while visiting our parks. Where it can impact other people and exclude their use. This policy would help create a culture of mutual respect, wellness, and sustainability. That is our presentation, but we do have a couple of other people I'd like to ask Jamie to come up and, and talk about how public health can support us.
Hello, councilmembers in here, I am Rachel Shimmel. I'm from the Columbia County Public Health Department. I'm happy to be here today with you all, thank you for having me. I have a letter of support from our department as the county I'd like to read to you in a minute. Dear New England City Council, on behalf of the Columbia County Public Health Department, we invite you to support the Burnonia City Parks Committee in effort to establish a smoke-free free parks ordinance within all of Burnonia City Parks. The community-wide impacts of this decision will include numerous health, environmental, social, and monetary benefits as presented in this presentation. The benefits of smoke-in-bake-free parks are to protect the community from exposure to secondhand smoke that is linked to these health problems, including heart disease, cancer, asthma, and other respiratory complications. Children and older adults, as well as pregnant people and those who have chronic illnesses, face an increased risk of developing these health problems because of exposure. Smoke-free parks act as a proven youth prevention strategy by limiting opportunities for youth to start smoking and vaping while increasing the prevalence of smoke-in-bake-free environments within the community. Smoke-in-bake-free parks reduce the amount of tobacco and vape waste that contributes to non-biodegradable litter from your land, waterways, and wildlife, to a level Spencer mentioned. Cigarettes and other tobacco product-related waste can be accidentally consumed by children and pets, and wildlife, of course, causing further health-related harms. These policies support people who have quit smoking or are trying to quit, and stay quit by committing with sight and smell of tobacco smoke as well. And these policies reduce the maintenance of cleanup costs and tobacco-related waste, also reducing expenses associated with environmental damage and restoration efforts from any potential fires. And these policies serve as the easiest form of policy to enforce as there's no confusion on where people can and cannot smoke. So we believe this will improve consistency among the city park regulations and ultimately lead to an increased community understanding and following. Approving this smoke-in-bake-free parks policy will effectively work to promote, protect, and provide a helpful and cleanly environment for all of the members of the public to enjoy. We, as the Public Health Department, are committed to providing the necessary signage to be posted at each city park, including Anderson Park, Spencer Park, Hawkins Park, Burnonia Lake, Mahalum River Park, Shade Park, Oral Balm Hill Park, thank you, Hulse Family Skate Park, and the Arc TV Dallas Dock Park. Signs will be funded by our Tobacco Prevention and Education Program that is through the Oregon Health Authority. In addition, we can offer further support through the implementation process with providing public awareness messaging and resources for questions as needed. Columbia County Public Health is here to support in making Burnonia City Parks healthier for everyone, both now and in the future. Thank you for your time and consideration. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did promise Carol that I would read her letter, because she did a little bit of work on it, so I wanted to read it since she's not able to speak her tongue. This is from Carol Cannon, Calhoun's resident in Burnonia, Oregon, member of the City Parks Committee. To Mayor Rick Hobart and the City Council, I support tobacco-free, smoke-free parks, and, which is quite a lot of the smoke-free policies. In Burnonia, Oregon, there is no safe level of secondhand smoke and aerosols, and aerosols, regardless of whether it's from tobacco, or cannabis, or e-cigarettes. This information is stated by the Public Health Law Center. Secondhand smoke poisons the air we breathe. It affects the kids and adults who don't even smoke, resulting in asthma, smoking-related cancers, cardiovascular, and metabolic diseases. Pulmonary disease, lung cancers caused by exposure to secondhand smoke, coronary heart disease, caused by exposure to secondhand smoke, just a few. This source of information is from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, National Center for Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion. These are some of the reasons that I'm in full support of tobacco-free, smoke-free parks in Burnonia. I support smoke-free parks, healthy parks for everyone, respectfully, Carol Cannon. And then the letter, again, from, from, which we have in our packet, which is a pretty strong letter. We know that they, that the, that schools have been really, you know, consider that they have a really issue with drug and alcohol and smoking among the youth in Burnonia. And this is an issue that they were working closely with Jessica before Haley came on to, and were very, very supportive, trying to make some changes in, among these thoughts and stuff like that. We, we provided a sample ordinance, a draft ordinance, it has draft on it. And if you were to change, I understand, one of the things that has been confusing to us, when we looked at the website, we realized that because you amended 914 to make it 940, you had to keep all of the.
Oh, no, you're looking at 940, which is those amendments. There is the codified version, it's just not on the website because it wasn't, the codified ordinance doesn't exist as a number.
Yeah, so on the, on the website is all the ordinances as they're adopted. There is a version that is the original, for all ordinances, the original ordinance as amended by. So it's the codified version of those exists.
But it's not on the website because it's not the actual ordinance. If that makes sense.
Yeah, so anyway, we were trying to read it and understand it, and I don't know if you guys have looked at it recently, but it's got all the red lines and adding, subtracting, and all this or something.
The track changes.
Yeah, the track changes, and for me, it was even hard to read it. But, and I talked to, we talked to Jocelyn and suggested it might be easier to replace the, if you guys support this.
Yeah.
To replace the ordinance, that 9, the 940 ordinance, and then amended by adding a much simpler, basic ordinance, which is the one that's drafted, that got drafted, which is basically that says that smoking isn't allowed in parks, except in the campsites. So, so we're asking them to consider that. You know, but basically what we're asking is the consideration of making Burnonia's smoke-free. Do you have any questions, James?
I got one, and I didn't catch your name, but the county health person. So campfire smoke, is that considered to be safe to inhale?
Campfire smoke, I believe so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I know in bigger jurisdictions, when we have inversions, they request people not to burn firewood. So, yeah, I mean, I'm just afraid where we keep going with this.
Well, there's a difference between what's in campfire smoke and cigarette smoke as well, like what Spencer was alluding to. So yes, smoke, campfire smoke is, is going to trigger somebody with asthma. Smoke is really bad for somebody with asthma, right? But the, the fact that there, that there are, I can't even remember when we were doing the research, but lots of chemicals.
Well, you're burning tobacco, which has all the fertilizer and all the, you know, other stuff that they use to grow that and then process it. And so you're, it's a lot of chemicals, other than just.
And then vaping in the same way, there's a lot of, lot of chemicals in there, and it's a significant amount of chemicals in, in that, so, in, in the tobacco products.
Speaking of campfires, there's a website, the state of Oregon has a website where you can call and complain about your neighbors' wood stoves. An EPA will stick the EPA arm, so that's an act. No matter what they say, the campfire, the wood stove will be banned in Oregon next, if they keep getting up.
I don't think that's related to this particular thing. They, I mean, that's, that's an air quality issue, but it's not really what we're asking for.
Any other questions for the Parks Committee?
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
And again, it's been two years of work on our parks, so I hope that you guys can support it.
So I guess we're at the point in our meeting tonight whether anyone wants to make a motion to amend.
Well, it wouldn't be, well, you can't, what you guys would be doing tonight is directing staff to bring you back an ordinance for your consideration to adopt. This ordinance is not before you because it didn't have the 10-day public, right? We got to put it out for your rules. So they're, they brought this as a draft potential, what they would like to see in one. One of the questions, if, are you deliberating? Because I have a question. Mayor, are you guys deliberating? Did, does any, or is everyone done?
We're all done.
Okay, so.
Anybody else had any more questions? Or discussions?
No, I don't think, I'm not done.
Okay.
Okay.
I think they were just unlistening, now they're.
I mean, you, you asked if we had any more questions.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Bill.
Of course, the elephant in the room here is the people that smoke, they're not here tonight. You know, it's gonna, they're the ones that's really going to affect. I know you have a statement that it doesn't exclude them from the parks, but if you're an addict to tobacco, it does. It excludes you because you're not going to go there if you have that addiction. I don't disagree with a lot of the facts on this. But, you know, the guy smoking on the table, I know who you're talking about. I talk to him every day, I go check the pumps. Yeah, I don't know if he'd be there fishing anymore. I don't know if the guy from coming out of town that goes out in his boat, puffs on a cigar out in the middle of the lake, is he gonna come anymore? I, I'm really reluctant without, you know, these other people, and then, and then the concern, it's, it's, you know, 67% of your people there at SAM festival thought we were already smoke-free. I'm trying to, and, and I did, I seen it down, the last time I walked to the lake, there was a group on one of the docks, and they were smokers. And there was a couple other people went, and they went on there, and then they left after a bit. I should have asked them if that's why, but they had room to move, other places to go. Yeah, I mean, and people, but people have sensitivities to it. I don't know how we're going to get away from that if you can still sit in your car there and smoke in the parking lot, and you walk, you gotta walk by them. Or the wood smoke from the campfires, or, you know, in, in our parks, if you can smoke at your campsite, that's going to drift through everybody, so we're still not really addressing it. I thought we kind of had a solution before, maybe we didn't really have it put in place, you know, the signage or the designation, this is where you smoke. If you got, you know, but, you know, your kid's over there swimming, and you can walk over here, pound a couple nails, and then go back. And I don't smoke, I don't support smoking, but I, to me, the poor smokers in this world, they have been villainized. I've seen the taxes they put on their products. It's crazy, I mean, that was enough to drive anybody from smoking anymore. And I got a stepdaughter I wish would quit smoking too, but, but still feel like they're getting victimized a little here, and without hearing any input from that side.
I talked to a smoker today about it, and she said, well, I actually support it. She said, you know, I wish I wasn't smoking, but I, I actually support the fact that, that the parks are smoking. So, and I've talked to other people that have, and I mean, I just talked to somebody just before the presentation, and I told her to go do this, and she said, well, I'm a smoker, but I actually, I actually think it's a good idea. Just one, one person, that's what makes sense.
I was just going to say, I mean, I understand the addiction and being addicted to substance, and that's a real thing, but it's, it is still a, you're not born a smoker. You could be born with an, with asthma, or with like a crippling condition that you have to just sort of deal with and exist with. And so that's where, I think, where we're more coming from, where we're not trying to, you know, villainize, or we're just trying to ask like, well, we should kind of create a baseline of a healthy space without secondhand smoke, and start from there. of a healthy space without secondhand smoke and start from there. So I think that's kind of where we've been coming from.
And recognizing that, yeah, you've got some smokers that you may not feel like the smokers are represented, but still, what we could say, 83% of the population doesn't smoke, and it affects those people too. And I think that's what seems to be sometimes eludes people, that those of us that have health conditions or, or asthma, or children, or elderly, or whatever, or, you know, some people just react, they don't have a health condition, but are impacted by, by that and are less likely to use the parks because people smoke. So we're talking accents both ways, right? And so it's not just that the smokers are the ones that are, the poor smokers. There are people that are, that are not being able to use the parks like they would like to be able to use it or feel the use of, without having, potentially having an asthma because somebody is smoking.
I'm a person with asthma, and I also have a very strong allergy to tobacco smoke, also to campfire smoke, but not as much. I don't go to campgrounds because of it. I don't camp in campgrounds, I'll only camp backcountry. If I go to a friend's house for a get-together and they're having a fire, I can stay for a little bit, but I usually have to leave early. And, I mean, I just, I agree with what's being said because I understand how difficult an addiction is to quit, but it, there is a choice there. No amount of willpower or trying or lifestyle is going to make me be reborn without a health condition. So, I mean, at the end of the day, to me, one is a choice and one is not. So it's easy to not go to two campgrounds. It's more difficult to not go to seven parks.
You want mine?
Oh, you want to go first?
Well, go ahead, Susan.
So I worked on the one prior to this one and caused all sorts of problems, and I As it relates to someone who is a smoker going to a park, they are not going to the park for 12 or 24 hours. They're probably going to go for an hour or two. And if truly they are that addicted to nicotine that they need to smoke, or, you know, they could get thumb, or they can get a patch, or they can go back to their car. It's not as convenient, but they are able to do that. What I would say is that in related, in unrelated, but similar circumstances, smokers have not stopped doing the activities they enjoy because they're not allowed to smoke, specifically restaurants, casinos, and similar places. They are still frequenting as often as they used to and sometimes more. And I will tell you that it has created a totally different environment, not just for the other patrons, but also the employees. A little different in a park, but very similar in that it's going to be everybody using that park is no longer going to have that exposure. And, and again, you know, I, they're not, I honestly believe that a, a smoker going to a park to enjoy the park is, is not going to be significantly delayed from getting their next cigarette. I am, I am curious. One of my concerns is that if we are saying no smoking in the parks, but they still want to be out in nature, are they then going to start having more issues with the trash and the debris in non-park areas? So for instance, they go down to the river, for instance, by the Green Bridge. Are we now going to have them having, are we going to start seeing more detritus and more debris in the rivers and trails that are not parks than we have them? That would just be a concern. Do we know the, because you give a lot of percentages of, and data. The, I was curious if there's an idea of how many, what the percentage of smokers are that are using parks is, about how many, the percentage, that the parks are already smoke-free, were the other 33% smokers, or they just didn't know? And I'm, there may not be questions you ask.
No, the, the survey was such that, I mean, there were people that smoked that, that they didn't, they weren't able to break it out in that kind of a detail in it, because we were trying to get some of that information and, and it was hard to do that. But the, but it was interesting that, and we also had, we, we asked people if they were out of town or not, that people that, that did smoke also did answer that they would use the parks more, or somebody in their family. So, you or someone in your family is a smoker, I think is how it was. So, and would you use the parks more or less? And, and again, it was almost, if you look at the scale of one to five, it was almost a four that people would use it more, right? And then we also asked the question, and I don't have this, actually, but we, but we also asked the question, they were out of town, and would they be more like, would they, would, because the question has come up, like we were just asking Dale, whether or not people would come into town, right? And, and it is still that they would use the parks more. The other thing that I think people are forgetting is looking back at that second slide where we talked about how predominant it is, it is in, in other, all the state parks are smoke-free, except the campsites. Banksman on the trail, they smoke, right? The, that's a state park and they're just smoke-free, not allowed to smoke on it. The, the most larger communities are smoke-free. It's really pretty predominant kind of throughout the state and in the national parks and in the, I believe the national parks, I'm pretty sure that's the case. And again, all the flex of county is smoke-free. Columbia County is four out of six are smoke-free, right? The, the, Mohegan County is entirely smoke-free. I mean, people are used to not smoking in parks. It's becoming a norm. We're a little behind the curve on it, but it's, it's becoming the norm. I don't think people are going to not come because they're not allowed to smoke. I think more people that otherwise might be hindered from coming, they're going to come as a result of making parks smoke-free for people.
Well, well, I'm a non-smoker, but to me, it's almost like, say, no fossil fuel vehicles in the park. And I kind of live in this community, so we don't have all the rules and regulations on big cities. I think you're taking rights away from people, and I'm not going to hunt you.
So I've, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
For council and, and for the committee. So I've hounded the committee. This isn't going to sound, this is going to be like repeat. My concern logistically is the enforcement. And I know we're saying we're going to do honor system, and then there was another verbant or wording in there. My concern is with the, this day and age, that we're going to have a whole bunch of people stopping others, like, so it's no smoking in the parks, but you can smoke in your car. Someone's going to walk by the car, smoke's going to be wafting out the window, they're going to start talking to that person, that person's going to tell them we're just of it. Then my police is involved. And that's where I have logistic concerns of, like, and may, and maybe that would be a grace period that we could, could just stomach through, right? But I think there is a hit we're not acknowledging that is going to be taxing the very small police force we have to go be the mediator in all of these instances. The other thing that was a little weird to me is the surprise that all the parks aren't smoke-free. I've put, I spent months watching baseball games. Not one person, not a spectator, not a guest, nobody was smoking. We had one mom that would walk to the sidewalk to use her vape thing, and then she'd come back to us, right? I don't know that both of us booster moms were eyeing each other. We'd have never signed something, and I am a smoker. So I would have known that I signed something that said.
Jason told me, that was Jason and.
No, I'm.
People told me that it was in the, in a.
But that's what I'm saying. When we sign our kids, there's a sheet like, you will follow these things, but I never, I don't remember smoking ever being on there. And I think I would have like been like, okay, note to self, right?
I don't think they made enough.
No, and it may be that.
We had the coach training too, and it wasn't in there.
Yeah. So that's, maybe they intend to, or it is now. But I had one, and she had one this season in coach training. So it's a great intention if they do have it, but I just wanted to clarify that because I haven't signed that. And then my last concern is the smoking in your car. How will that work at a park like Anderson, Hawkins? They're going to be parked right next to Dewey Pool, smoking in their car, following the policy, and there it goes wafting down. Or they're going to be parked at Anderson.
If they have their windows up.
Yeah, most, I don't know any smokers that roll, smoke at their windows up.
I can't see anything about whether or not your windows are up. You know what that, I don't know what that.
People typically don't hot box their cars once a bathroom's smoked.
It's pretty.
They don't what?
Like.
Hot box their car.
Light their car full of smoke. But what I'm saying is, that's my other concern, is if we are saying, is it state law that they can smoke in their car? Okay. If that's state law, how does that logistically play out?
Well, I don't know, but that's, that's what the state parks, that, that.
No, I'm.
Straight from the state.
I'm not against that verbiage, Kim. What I'm saying is, how does that look for us? You, you have nine parking spots at the front wall of the lake. You have two old guys, the guy from the picnic table, because he's following the rules, he's not smoking back there anymore. He's smoking in his truck. Everyone's walking down that path. Is that guy okay? Is he not okay? There's going to be alteration, altercations if he is following the rules and someone goes, this is smoke, parks are smoke-free. And then it's, right? And then it's police. So that's kind of where my brain's going, is how does that logistically work? And what would we, what are we educating the citizens of, like, the parks smoke-free, but if you walk by, Bill's smoking, you can't say he can't do it? Does, does that make sense?
I think that probably, I, I would assume that there, you know, in a lot of places that have come to this before us, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so I suspect that the state parks have worked out something.
But I think depending on how they're laid out, that might not be such a problem if everyone's cars are in one spot. You hike the trail to a park property, like in Hillsborough, you park a half mile from where you're recreating, if that makes sense. So that's, I'm just like looking at, okay, the lake, that might be a problem at the front wall. Anderson, the day-use parking is right by the place structure, and you also have the campers, but that's a different thing. So I'm just like, my brain's kind of trying to get around how, what is the, how, what is the effect? Should council go with this? What will be the effect? Staff and everybody has to address.
It might be worth it to check with the other, other municipalities about what they experienced in terms of, of course, they let's go free, tobacco free on all their parks. So they, I don't know, they have campgrounds and like Seonons or Skippus or whatever it means. So I haven't checked.
Yeah.
They do, but, but I, I don't know that, again, what we're envisioning is starting by putting signs up to educate, right?
Yeah.
That's our, that is.
But you know that there's.
I think the stats are for dumb and the way they have to enforce. And not that it's going to be something, like, we didn't, we did not write in there anything about, you know, that the police would come if they were, they're, in the current policy, it says that if they don't, if they don't discontinue after being, you know, talked to, that they can be removed from the park.
But who's, who's talking to them? Because I see it as someone's doing that and, pardon my use of the trendy term, a Karen comes over and says, don't you know, like, that's, that's the mandate that I have, like a little bit of a trouble with, because for most things, I can, the police can point to state law, they can point to policy of the council. If this is policy, great, but I'm worried about someone's following half the policy because they're in their car, someone's right that it is smoke-free, and what is the city going to do about it kind of thing? Sorry.
So tell me if I'm wrong, but I perceive that we have plenty of places in our parks where there are parking spaces within 50 feet of a playground. So technically, you could already be having these altercations, and we're not, right?
Right. But I, that's partly because we do not see the same issue you see as staff, as Tim cleaning up butts. He is not seeing just massive amounts of cigarette butts. So we're having a problem making it pencil that we're going to now, like, does that make sense? Other than the guy, like, are you seeing people? I am not seeing anyone in Spencer Park smoking. And I've hung out there, my kids play there, like, I don't see anyone, there's no, so I'm like trying to figure out where is the fire, so to speak.
I, I don't, I, I don't. Tim go to Spencer Park very much, I've gone to Anderson, and I've gone to, so mainly once I go through Anderson and, and the lake.
Yeah.
I go to Alstair. And again, I walked around one time with 27 cigarette butts. I wasn't, you know, robbing them as I went. They were, they were there. And, and I regularly see people smoking and, and often have to walk through smoke in order to, to continue on my trail. So that's, that's a pretty regular thing. I also know that, that at the lake, because it's not clear about the signage of which areas can be smoked, even though there are places you're not supposed to smoke in the lake, that, that they are not, that because there's no signage up there, then the park house basically is alone. And unfortunately, thinking there's no signs there, right? So the, effectively, we have a, a, our, our, except for those four parks that hopefully have the signs up, we don't have, we basically don't have smoke-free areas in those parks because there's no signage and nobody will, nobody recognizes it, or nobody's going to, to enforce it. And, and so I, I think that, so right now, you know, we're, so that's.
So that's be my only thing, logistically, how will it affect us? So I'm all for, if you guys are, whatever you guys decide, staff will pull off, but just something to think about, like, what will be our process when that happens? Because I think it's going.
We'll talk to the other municipalities and see really how big a deal it was.
Well, and I almost think, the last time I talked to Greg, or it was like Greg or John, one of them, he, he had kind of an unfortunate response, which is, we don't, like, yeah, they're smoke-free, but we don't even, and that concerns me.
They're not enforcing.
Right. They're not doing, but they're not doing anything, and they're not doing anything when someone does bring up the problem, which to me is the wrong way to, if we're going to have a policy, I'm expecting staff, park house, the police to enforce that policy. So that worried me, that he said, oh, yeah, it's on the books.
I really think that that's, that is more than, if you're creating a social norm.
I get, I get that.
You just start out with signs.
I get that part.
Hold on, just a minute.
Sorry.
Okay. Sorry.
That was speaking.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah.
Okay.
To me, it feels like saying. Why are we making murder illegal because someone's still going to murder somebody? I mean, you're never going to have a hundred percent of anything, but. You know, at the end of the day, if certain people can't go to parks, I think that. Where does their right end that a smoker's rights begin? I don't, I don't know.
Well, my.
I'm not worried about getting hung up in the. After the fact is that's all hypothetical. We don't know what could happen. I think it's either a decision you want to make or not, and then you figure that for that.
So my observation is if there are people smoking in the park. And there, or there are people smoking their cars, there aren't going to be any more people smoking their cars than there were in the park. It's just going to be more localized. So I'm not sure that that is a, for me, a concern. That they're going to have to walk through the, the area where one person or maybe two people are smoking at any one time in their cars. For me, that's not an issue. I would be curious, have we, have you, has the parks committee done anything like? Observations for, you know, in teams that you spent a day or number of days. Just observing how many people are actually smoking in the parks and how much of an issue. It is.
Not in teams or not for days, uh, but I think again. As individuals going through with the parks, we've experienced. I think pretty, I mean, when this came up at the Parks Committee, I wasn't the one who raised it. Okay. There were several people in the group that felt really strongly and I said, okay, you want to take it on. But it's not, it wasn't something I raised. It was, it was brought up by a number of people and they got talking about it and got really upset about the fact that they couldn't go to a park without. About that. So that was, that's what led into this.
But to me, that is not empirical information. That's, that's a, and please understand, I am very supportive of your committee. But that's not data driven. That's not saying, that's a group of people saying, I'm upset because I went to the park. I went to the park. Somebody was smoking over here. Somebody was smoking. But it's not giving us. A really data driven idea of how, what the problem really is. It is, it's a subjective, not objective view. And for me, um, I would like to have some more information like that. I personally have never, I don't think, and not that I use the park that often. But I've not seen smoking. I've never been, when I have walked the lake, I've not run across. I can't recall one time that I've run across somebody who was smoking.
Well. So my experience has been I, it may only be one person. But pretty much every time I go to the lake, I see someone who's smoking. And that's, that's my experience. I don't see it on the, I don't see it on the linear park wreckage. I see it in Anderson. And, well, I'm on the door of it. There's, there's plenty of area of the lake that you see it pretty regularly. Just around restaurants.
Anything else? Well, are we done deliberating? Go ahead, Jer.
Well, you know, in my opinion, just from a citizen that's not involved in the parks committee. I've lived here 46 years. I've been to all the parks, who quite often now. I just don't see the problem. It's like where you're being asked to create a solution for a problem that's not that big. Last time there was a big dust up and we made all these rules. We're going to put smoking interventions here. The city failed to do that in five years. There's no smoking benches, no clear signage.
Well, we didn't, we didn't fail to do it. We purposely didn't do it because they were still going to push further to smogery parks. And we didn't want to outlay the cash to.
My other thing is we've got people here with talent agencies and stage agencies or whatever, but the state is selling the cigarettes and making money off people. And if you're really wanting social engineers, don't go half ass. You're not going to be able to do that. You've got to be proficient at the lake, for camping and all more parks, more campgrounds to come in. You can't stand on edge of the line to another smoker. You're going to have a big fight on your hands and it's going to be coming back here. We're going to have all no smoking and no campground. It's going to get more and more and more and more. It never stops. Then you're going to have no smoking, non-public city life. So you might as well just go no smoking in city, no sale of tobacco or cigarettes in Burnown because we're going to make a safe, healthy place. No pot, smoke, you know, I smell that on Columbia Boulevard. It burns my eyes every day, but I don't answer for that. What can I do about it? So I think you guys are put in a tough situation right here. And you're probably better off leaving it just the way it is. It's not that broke. Why mess with it? That's just my opinion. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Jer.
Can I ask, so has our police department been involved? Do you have any knowledge of being called? Because we do have, there's probably some people.
No, we haven't had any calls, like you mean of the dust ups between people?
Yeah.
I think most of us say it, if, I mean, I've heard it said once, like, hey, there's no smoking here. And the person just goes, okay, and just walks, walks further away from all of the people. So I haven't ever seen a, like a. But the way society is getting, that seems to be more and more is just kind of a, let's fight, fight at each other and bark at each other and. I don't know, could never happen. Teresa's right, could be hypothetical. My fear is it is, it, what is it if it isn't, if it goes the other way? But.
I want you to get information.
Yeah. I mean, I'm happy to, if council wants me to call the other places within our county and then bigger. And say how, what incidences do you guys have of it? How often are you dealing with that or what's your response?
I, I do think the enforcement is a common concern that, that, that municipalities or.
Yeah.
That's composing this app. But when, uh, when Mottlemack County did this, I was actually working for Mottlemack County at the time that it did this. They did not have very many issues with enforcement. They really did it through signage. And, uh, and it just became, again, it became gradual. More and more people recognized that that wasn't a way to smoke. And it didn't create, you know, a lot of enforcement issues with police and stuff like that. So really what we're asking pretty much is we'd like signs up. We'd like the kids to recognize that they're not smoking. We'd like the people to, to feel supported with their parents with, we'd like people that are, you know. That have health conditions to be able to go someplace and, and not worry about it. But I don't, you know, and that's my opinion is that it's going to raise people's awareness. I don't think, the majority of people don't deliberately try to, to break the rules, you know? Some people do, but not most people. Most people are, you know, if you had a sign up, you know, if you're not supposed to litter, they don't. Throw an example. I have some people to do, but you know.
I don't like to reference Mottlemack County because I work at the park blocks. There's hundreds of needles, thousands of cigarettes, all over the area.
Well, this was a long time, but then, but still I was there when it, it came on and it wasn't.
So.
You can't even let your kids play in the parks.
Okay. Should council want to have staff bring back this draft ordinance? That, that 10 day public period would be the smoker's chance to come have their say. Should you do that and they're going to adopt? Does that make sense what I'm saying? Dale, you commented, the smokers aren't here. Well, the ordinance isn't on the table, right? You would have that public process to allow for people that wanted to come if they had, if they were for or against. In a public way.
Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah. I mean, and I've, I've heard a couple of people, you know, talk about, you know, is it even an issue? It is for the person that runs into it, obviously.
Yeah.
I mean. I just hold my breath and walk through, you know, if I'm right in the path, but. But there again, just how big is this issue? So maybe we should be.
I know that.
Research around our parks and just.
I know that the main issue, I believe was from, one of them was from Jana. And it was down at the confluence, which that isn't as.
It's going to get sketchy.
Right, right. It's mostly people shoving off. There's not a real big area for a good group to. So I think that was where a lot of it was happening was people floating the river, people getting in their inner tubes. It was a smoker's group or something because there was a lot. She has pictures of it. But I haven't seen it that way again recently in the last two years. So I'm trying to. I'm trying to figure it out too. Maybe we do a study of. Sit at a park with your binoculars. How many smokers?
So to me, the question of how big is the issue? From what I, the numbers I remember, which this is throwing things together without going back. Well, I know it was 17% I guess of adults in Vernonia don't smoke. Or do smoke, sorry. And that's not including anyone. Under the age who's not allowed to smoke, which is a huge percentage of our population, right? So if you take total citizens of Vernonia, it'd be a much smaller amount. The amount of people, if you combine the totals for the people with just asthma and COPD, that was almost 20%. So the problem, the size of the problem on both sides is at least comparable, if not. More to me on the smoke free side. And. What Dale just alluded to is, it's, it's borderline offensive that people are sitting here saying. Oh, I don't think it's a problem. Of course you don't. It doesn't affect you. That's it.
Okay. I'd like to settle this tonight. And I don't think.
Can't, could direct staff or not.
With a vote. That's what. Are you asking us?
Yeah. You're either, you're going to vote to either direct staff to bring ordinance as.
Yes.
Or deny it.
I prepared for that.
I would like to move that staff bring forward a proposed ordinance at our next meeting.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, hold on. Councilor Webber?
Hi.
Mayor Holbert?
Nay.
Councilor Ash?
Hi.
Councilor Webb?
No.
Nay.
Motion fails.
Okay.
I would like to thank the Parks Committee for all the work you did regardless.
So we're still not done yet.
The meeting.
Moving on in the meeting. Businesses from the departments.
Nope.
Ordinances and resolutions. Correspondence. City administration.
Okay. Um, no change on the dump. The SCA ODOT grant. Why did I just leave July? Oh, July, the paving. We, they're trying to line out their grinder team. So they have not given us a date for the paving. We've been hounding Eric. We've threatened to go to his wife. To get an answer because we're like, come on, get the paving scheduled. But he said, he still has not given us a date. The doc grants, we've approved the design. The construction is happening. Um, we're still aiming for late August or September, early September for delivery. And Mitch, along with Councilor Webb, has been going to. The lake and they've. Figured out how to prop them up so that when we take the railings off and people are on them in that temporary, temporary period, they won't fall over. So they've, they've been having their runs at getting very wet in the lake, trying to get the. The barrels underneath to keep it floating up for a while. So yeah, we'll, we're going to have a point where we take the railings off and they'll be without railings. Until we remove them for the replacement. ODOT project, they'll be back in 2025 as I, that'll probably just stay that way until they come back. Uh, North South Connection, we're finalizing the bid documents and it's, as long as we can get it on the. DJC website, the formal bid will go out tomorrow. We're in union negotiations. I know you feel like we're back here too soon. It is because we are back here too soon, but. The contract that we were negotiating in 2021 took us till the end of 2022 to get finalized. Because of not having enough members. So it was only really a year and a half contract and we're back. For renegotiation for another three year contract. And they're, they're not proposing anything other than one little change on, uh. The vacation that if we don't have minimum staffing and they aren't allowed to take vacation. That they could, and they're going to lose when it rolls over, that they could be paid. Should the budget support it? Should all these things? Um, but that's really the only change they're requesting, partly because they just negotiated two years ago. So we're hoping, um, that that just is accepted, presented to you guys and we move on for the next three years. Uh, the lake campground design, project closure, we're waiting for the hundred percent drawings. And the phase one plan. So I think I've talked to all of you about it. We had like $3,500 in the contract. That was supposed to go to construction help because we were going to go for the grant and then they were going to help us with the construction bid docs. But that wasn't really going to get used appropriately. So we changed it and made it a phase one underground. Actual plan with specifications so that we could self perform the underground infrastructure. Um, of phase one ourselves. So it's going to be, we could do it ourselves. We could hand it to a local that does excavation. The city could do whatever, but we'll have that plan. Um, instead of just letting that money not get spent, um, out of the grant. So. We're hoping in the next two weeks, John will have that for us and then we'll, we'll just turn in our final reimbursement and we'll be done with that grant. CDBG springboard project, we amended the mobilization to the week of the eighth. There's a Northwest Natural Gas Main where Anderson Park is the last customer on the line. And it's under Bear Creek. They don't want to leave it under Bear Creek. So they want to decommission it back down Adams. And bring us in off the line on Jefferson. But that could potentially have the park without water for two months, hot water for two months. So we're going to. Buy an on-demand electric. Not gas, because we won't have any, um, to temporarily use to support the showers there. And then we'll just have that if we need to use it in another bathroom or if we have some one-off and we'll have a product.
Possible to get a propane nozzle for that?
It is, but the rules about, we looked into that, but the rules about a propane tank in the public. Has some things that for like $2,000. for like $2,000, we can get an electric one plus the electric bill. Or for more money, plus being propane, filling it however much. We were planning on going the electric way just because it seems to be a quicker, because they're potentially decommissioning that line like in the next few weeks. So we had to have a kind of quick turnaround. And when we started looking at bolting it down, it's in the flood plain, just all those nightmares. So electric seemed to be cost, more cost-effective. DEQ permit, so we met today. They're still pushing most of the same permit concerns. They're gonna be giving me an email version that I will forward to you guys tomorrow. They're gonna be delivering that in our emails tomorrow so that you guys can start to take a look. And I can also send the old one. If you're not interested in it all and you just want us to bring you the synopsis of a later date, you don't have to read it. But the ones that do want to read it, you'll have both of them there. And it does look a lot different because they're kind of streamlining. Permits are typically every five years. Chris asked when our last permit was and the woman said, oh, I believe in 2,000-something. And Jeff and I look at each other and we're like, no, we haven't had a permit since before 99. And she was like, so we were like 25 years. It's gonna, gonna be a lot different. They will still let us do the discharge of the 200,000 gallons during foregoing the hyperiak, which I said, my council would really like DEQ to just give us the $5 million for that. And then I asked, I even went as deep as asking if the Chevron decision would take the EPA's requirements off, which then would let us allow them to use the hyperiak. And they were both like, we haven't even read the decision. So anyway. So Springboard, oh, sorry, DEQ permit, I'll send it to you guys. We have two weeks. We're gonna probably request longer than that just because I don't want Jeff and Chris. I want them to go through it and see how it's gonna affect them, not just a quick turnaround and answer. The other thing that we did talk about was a recycling water program. So that might be a way where we, instead of using the hyperiak, we would do purple pipe and do the wetlands or get it to a treatment component where we could water Spencer Fields or something. That's one option out there. We also did ask, because the discharging 200,000 gallons during the summer period only would work when the combined river levels were above 33 cubic feet per second. Which, fine, for 50% of the days in the summer, that river level is above that. So we could discharge 200,000 gallons. What we're asking them to do is when it's way above that, that we can send way more. Because the problems aren't summer and 200,000 gallon shots. The problems are the huge deluge where the cubic feet per second gets to be 209 and we're still only allowed to send out 200,000. We're not gonna make, we're gonna overflow, we're gonna fail or violate the permit. I said, so that was one issue. We're, we're gonna have our staff kind of comments to go to them. The other issue was with their requirement to treat to 85%. When it comes in diluted and clean, there is no way to treat 85% of it out. And I said, if knowing this, we know we're gonna be constantly violating. So one of the things, and I said, because we know INI is contributing to it and we know it's gonna take us 10 years to even address the INI we have right now while the system degrades and we get more INI, like it's a whole nightmare. So they're looking at a compliance, what they call like a compliance process. So knowing that, if they hold on to it and don't lessen it, we'll have a way to know and then we can prove we're doing INI and then not get fined if we go above the, if we can't meet the treatment. So it's a lot of stuff. Happy reading. So we'll have to make a decision at some point. So then she said, well, and if council is against the permit, they can comment from the public comment period. And I said, but really the public comment period, you're gonna let them comment and you're not changing anything, right? And they both looked at me like.
So is this gonna come in the form of a presentation from them, Josiah, to our council?
No, it, it can. Tiffany is willing to come out if you guys want her to and, and do it. But I want you kind of to run over it. Maybe we have Jeff and Chris explain to you the parts that they see as concerning or something. Or you can have Tiffany, but I'm a little worried it will just be her repeating what we already know. But I'm happy to invite her if you guys want her. Once you take a look at the permit, then maybe you can say, oh, I'd like someone to come explain this or it's pretty self-explanatory.
So what's that gonna do in your estimation financially to the city?
Well.
Are we gonna have to spend millions of dollars to get in compliance or?
So we might, there's, there's a lot of potentials. So if ammonia is a compliance problem, which doesn't seem like it's gonna be, but if it is, we do have the air pressure in the system to add manifolds or add treatment components and one, aerate that, get it eating it up, add more poo glues. We have options, right? All of those will cost money. So it's just gonna be how much we think we can actually make good on a daily basis, meeting what their new requirements are.
So basically where we're at now is EPA is saying we're not in compliance and they will not issue a permit?
No, DEQ.
DEQ, I mean.
DEQ is giving us a draft permit. It does not include Outfall III, does not include the hyperiak. It's like they don't even. And they said the hurdle to get it in our permit is that we have to go to the United States Something Group. What is it? I thought she said you assy, but I don't think it's the same thing I'm thinking. An acronym. I'm trying to think of what the acronym stands for. Anyways, it's a, it's a next level up from DEQ that would tell us what the hurdle would be, what they would need to see in the testing and in the study of the mixing zone. We would have to prove, here's what the mixing zone is. And then they would give us treatment requirements and we'd have to treat to that to send it underground. We requested from them, we would like the contact, we would like that data sheet of what the components they're gonna look for. Because we need to know how big is the hurdle to jump? Is it, can we make it or are we out and we're out, right? So I was kind of frustrated that they came with the draft permit and didn't have that because they know it's a problem for us. They know we're frustrated about it, all the things, so.
That's where it's at.
Yeah. So I'm gonna send you guys the draft permit, it'll say draft on it, and then the old permit. Or I can make copies, probably copies will be easier for most people to read, there are so many pages. But I'll make copies of both and then you can pick them up here. Just review it and we're reviewing it simultaneously. And then probably your next council meeting. We proposed that we were gonna ask for 30 days to review it, not just the two weeks. Just because Chris, it's like formulas and it's all this stuff where he has to like pre, put in a number we have and see what it does to it so he understands all the formulas. But maybe the meeting on the 15th, I could bring you back like what Jeff and Chris's concerns are. Does this look like they're gonna meet us somewhere where we can succeed and not violate our permit on a, on a, you know, monthly basis or not? So. That's where that's at. Electrical, still have not got it from Woehwicke, but then the gentleman that wants the electrical is working on a permit to be at Mike Peel's.
Yeah.
So I think we, I'm, I'm not too worried. He's setting up, we have the estimate, Woehwicke will get us the other estimate and then we'll have a baseline of what to expect should, should you guys want to go forward. And then we're closed, just a heads up for 4th of July. And if, are you, you're here in town, right? They want us for the boot. They want us to hold the boots and collect the money.
Oh, okay.
You and Donna are willing, or you and somebody. Because we're willing to for next year's event. Then we have the priorities work session on the 8th. And then you guys have Tuesday, the 9th. I'm sure everyone got an email about the city-county dinner. I saw somebody respond that they were able or not able to make it. And then we have council, then the CA evaluation, which is the 22nd. So they get the things on. Okay. All right. And then we're closed at noon on Friday, August 2nd for jamboree. You guys have questions for me?
So what's Dale setting up on the 4th?
No, Dale, he volunteered to hold the boot on the way out. We're gonna hold the boot and collect donations for, fundraise for next year.
Oh, okay. They used, we used to do that in the past.
Okay.
I don't know, you probably did it.
Yeah, somebody was a volunteer, but he called and he said, do you really have people that'll hold the boot? And I said, yeah, my husband and I'll do it. And I said, I think Counselor Webb and his wife might do it. And he's like, great. Yeah, anyways. Well, usually we do it because people are like, that was a great show. Here's 20 bucks, 20 bucks, you know? Just hold the boot up and then hand the boot to the firework people. It's a good show, they'll pay, maybe.
Well, we have a couple law enforcement on duty that night.
Yeah.
Full crew, maybe.
Yeah, unfortunately, you can only do so much to chase it down because if you don't see the person lighting it, there's not much you can hold over that. So they'll go towards the, and then nobody, no, no light, no spark, so.
Well, I'm glad we're having the fireworks again. It'll probably alleviate some of the other stuff that happened last year.
And don't forget, if you're, if you're into the duck race, buy your duck. The duck race is 2:00 PM.
I'm catching. Any other questions?
You are. Catching a man, then you're gonna be holding the boot.
Any other items for the city administration?
I will be off-grid on the 8th and then the 22nd is a fourth Monday, which I have a standing obligation. So I'll miss both those. I'll get my priorities in before the 8th.
And are you, is this the meeting where we order them? Or is that the meeting in September?
I'll do it at the beginning of the year. The first one of the year is when we usually do it.
So to order them, so I don't have to do.
I have to look. That's just what's in my.
Okay, we'll look and see. Typically, if there's something new, proposed new or whatever, we'll look and see what date it was. Otherwise, it'll just be an update from me on where the projects are at.
Yeah. Thank you, Jill, that.
Yep.
Items from the mayor and councils, anybody?
Mick Jagger, he was still moving, Justin. They post all their concerts on their YouTube channel and it is definitely worth a watch.
Okay.
The concert was in Chicago Springs.
My wife and I went down in the waiting pool this morning and I picked up way more litter and plastic than I didn't even, I saw one cigarette butt. So I just wanted to bring that up. Anyway, sounds like the dam's going in tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yep.
Cool.
Yep. Anyway. Dale?
Yeah. I think tonight might have been a good example of why when we, we have our liaison reports that we need to speak up if we have reservations about moving forward on subjects because now we got a committee that was very vested, spent a lot of time and effort and we just shot them down. They're gonna have hard feelings on that.
So that was.
We should have had that workshop. We should have workshopped that and really fleshed it out amongst ourselves before we let them move forward with that, is my opinion.
Go ahead.
So that concern was raised and I took it straight to them and they felt that they didn't, they weren't comfortable with asking to make a decision until they could give you as much of their compelling evidence as possible. So we discussed that in a meeting here that was taken back to them, they were aware. I mean, I think with committees, there's two sides. There are things we direct them to work on and there's gonna be things that they want to work on to pitch. And they don't want you to decide before you've heard what they were able to find out.
Well, me personally, this was the third time I've sat through a presentation from Ms. Tierney. One was at the Senior Center last year. I thought a lot about it. I, I haven't seen anything until tonight with this.
You mean from their committee?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was poorly reported to us, demonstrated tonight. Half their committee wasn't even here. The third option they picked, that was the first time I've seen it. I could barely read it. I, talking about the smoking and campfires. And when I first, I've been thinking a lot about this. I go, how are we gonna send one of our officers out to the Haylen Valley Park at nine o'clock on a Saturday night with a guy that just lit up a cigarette, sitting around a campfire and tell him he can't smoke? He's gonna get in his car and he's gonna leave. I don't want to send, we don't want to send our.
No, but I mean, yeah.
So, and then that's the first time I knew about it tonight that you could go smoke in your car or you can smoke on campfires. But I just thought it was poorly presented to us tonight and. I'd already made out my mind.
A word defending them, most of the time when they present something, present something, the whole committee doesn't show. So they had probably a better fare than the rest of them. Usually they only send one person to be the guinea pig, right?
Okay.
So they did have more than typical, but yeah, yeah.
That was my opinion.
Can I ask what you meant just now when you said you'd already made up your mind?
Yeah.
When?
Because.
When had you already made up your mind, tonight or prior?
No, when it was presented.
Tonight.
No, not tonight. I've sat through three of these. Columbia County of Mental Health and, yeah, so. yeah, so.